Good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the St. Helena City Council for May 10, 2016. And Mr. Pitts, will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Pitts.
Here.
Doring.
Here. Public forum, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on matters not on our agenda. Public forum is limited to three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak at public forum? Please come to the dice. Yeah. Or the podium.
I always imagine I'd be standing here asking for the right to dance.
Okay.
My name is Ron, I'm with Computer Engineering Group. We just moved into town on Main Street, so hello, everybody.
Hello, we saw it in the newspaper.
Yes, it just so happens that we fix computers and cellphones. Is that part of the three minutes? No, I'm just kidding. So, one of the things that we did notice is that in front of our location, we've got about five parking spots, and those parking spots seems to be filled up by people who spend the whole day there. So, there's a couple businesses in that corner that I think are losing out on opportunity for customers to drive by and pick up their items by not having a parking spot that's an hour or less. So, what I was hoping is that we would turn what's known as the black hole of Main Street into something that can actually, you know, thrive and have, you know, the ability for businesses to generate some more revenue. It would help us, it would help the salon next door, and I know that the gentleman over at the health food store, he has his own parking spots, but sometimes, you know, it's hard to get in there and they're full, so it would help him too. So, what I'm hoping is that we can turn those five spots into one hour or less. I did want to do 30 minutes, but it was brought to my attention that it takes you an hour to get your nails done, so that's completely okay with us.
All right.
So, it doesn't have to be a specific, you know, it doesn't have to be too long or too short, but it just, something would really help us out, so I was just wondering if maybe we can get that taken care of.
All right, well, I'm sure the Public Works Director will look into it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Hello, everybody, I'm Ron.
Okay, thanks very much.
If there's anything you need, let us know. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Anybody else wish to speak at the public comment? Public forum. All right, reports by staff and city council, future agenda items in AB 1, 2, 3, 4 reports. Let's start with Ms. Phillips.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. When we did our budget workshop, I had mentioned as part of our transparency and helping the council understand the budget challenges that we were having, I had mentioned that there was potentially another challenge coming, ranging in about $250,000 that the city might be facing. I'm pleased to tell you that we've continued work on that, and through the diligence, due diligence, and deep research by staff, we believe we're able to bring that amount down. There still is a challenge that we'll be facing, but we've been able to significantly reduce our estimates and the exposure of the city related to that matter, and that'll be coming before the council sometime in June.
All right, very good. Ms. Mitts?
Mayor, councilmembers public, I just want to thank everyone who was able to attend our budget workshop last week. It was a long day, but it was very exciting for us as department heads to be able to let the public and let the council know what we do on a day-in, a day-out basis. I am also pleased to announce that we do have our audited financials, so it's been a long process for us, and we are planning on presenting that to city council at the next meeting, the last meeting in May. Thank you.
And for all those that missed the budget workshop, they can watch it on the city website, correct?
It will be posted soon.
Okay, very good. Mr. Brown?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Black?
As a matter of fact, I do. Talking about transparency from our budget meetings, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have e-news, that we can provide the community with information, all the latest information that we're working on. So, signup sheet is in the back, or you can contact me and we'll get you signed up, and that way, everyone can get the information. And, some information I'm going to be sending out, we have lots of vacancies coming up on the boards and commissions, I've got applications, I've got information on how many vacancies and what seats are going to be available on the back counter, so get the word out. It's also going to be in the star this Thursday, so I'm going to really promote the community outreach to get some applications in.
Okay, very good. Mr. House?
Just briefly, I'd like to announce that senior planner, Aaron Heacock, is a father for the first time as of Saturday.
Oh, very good.
And then, baby girl, and everyone's doing well, so, except for me, because that means I'm the only planner in the office.
(laughing).
So, I just want basically the public to know that, you know, we may experience a little bit of delay in our development review process, not expected to be significant, but I am the only planner holding down the fort right now.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce, once again, let people know about Public Works Week, which is coming up May 16th to 20th, we're doing some tours, so if people want to come out and see City Hall, see the wastewater plant, see the water plant, and see the courtyard, welcome, do so. There's some flyers on the back table, and you can call in an RCPA spot to get a tour of our Public Works facilities.
Yeah, I would really encourage everybody who hasn't taken a tour to take a tour. They're all eye-openers, but if I had to pick one that was the worst of the eye-openers, it would be the wastewater treatment plant. Go take a look, and ask yourself, would you really work there? Mr. Pitts? Any? Ms. Kroll? Mr. Doring?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'd like to report that I went to the A-Bag General Assembly in Oakland on April 21st. I thought it was going to be a rather routine meeting, but sparks flew all throughout the meeting. The biggest issue, the big topic of the day, was the A-Bag MTC merger under discussion right now. The timing wasn't great because the joint assembly of the MTC and A-Bag were going to meet the very next day to make a recommendation and decide which of the alternatives they were going to recommend and approve for the merger. During the general assembly, the day before, the general assembly was not allowed to really participate in that discussion. We were only to be potted plants to receive information on the process of the merger, and how it, the report came out, but not on the substance of the alternative. So, as you can imagine, folks from the cities and counties were not really thrilled about that process. A petition was circulated during the meeting, signed by 19 cities and three counties, saying, wait a minute, we want to be heard on this issue, we want to have a substantive discussion on the alternatives. I was one of the folks who signed that petition of the 19 cities, I thought that was important for our city to do that. So, another meeting has been scheduled on May 19th to go through the alternatives. In the meantime, the Joint Committee of MTC Boards and MTC A-Bag Boards have recommended option seven, and you, I'm not sure if you're all familiar with option seven, but there is a long, lengthy report from Management Partners that I think was distributed to the council. It's basic, the option seven is basically a staff merger only, staff from A-Bag would go to MTC, and the governance issues would be worked out through an MOU over time. So, there's much more to come, but that's basically it. In a nutshell, you can look at the management report to get a better understanding of the various options. If there's a need from anyone to give me direction in any manner, we'll have to schedule a meeting earlier, but I kind of get the sense of where I'm going with this.
I think we've deferred to you, that was the whole point in appointing you in the first place.
Well, I didn't expect to have so much activity, Mayor, but thank you.
Mr. White?
Nothing to report.
My only report is that I attended a meeting last week at the Franciscan Winery. Caltrans was presenting, it dealt with the channelization project, and they promised to be through with the roadway reconstruction and the new layer of asphalt by late July, early August, before crush. That was really their, their desire was to have it done before crush. It's obviously moving along, they're ahead of schedule, that's good. It turns out that the roadway closest to St. Helena, the first 1,500 feet going south, has to be completely repaired, or reconstructed, rather, and that's what you see going on now, as they do that. So, any event, hopefully we'll get through this before the end of the summer, which would be good. Okay, presentation, Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, you ready? Okay. This is our annual appearance before the city council to show you what we've been doing with our marketing efforts. As you know, the city has entered into a two-year, $210,000 per year contract with the chamber to provide visitor services and destination marketing. And we're thrilled tonight to show you our results of our marketing plan. It should be made clear, all of this $210,000 is used appropriately in marketing and in Welcome Center budget, and as the contract dictates, and that no city money is used by the chamber for economic development, member benefits, or other chamber initiatives. Adopted in 2014, the chamber's strategic priority for marketing is purposely and thoughtfully worded. Our intent is to market St. Helena to build revenue with low impact. This means we're committed to manage tourism in order to maintain our quality of life while leveraging St. Helena's tourist-based economy. We believe and we know we can have both. With our overall strategy to build revenue with low impact, we can outline our goals to attract high-quality visitors who will stay several nights, obviously heads-to-beds, to bring in people who will shop and taste wine and buy wine, bucks to tills, and dine here in St. Helena, forks and hands. We keep that, and those are the words that sort of swirl in our heads every night before we go to bed, so, words we live by. So, how do we get these high-value, low-impact visitors to choose St. Helena? We know that we need to position St. Helena as a world-class destination, it's a pretty easy fact, we've got great businesses in order to do that. We have to educate consumers to their options, which we do through the website and all of our different marketing opportunities. We need to increase technology communication. We know that Visit California's trends show that everybody is going to digital and going to especially mobile-enhance their phones for travel information. And we need to focus on lifestyle and passion. Again, the trend is towards experiences. People don't want to come and just sort of stop on a couple places, they want to come and really get a feel for the town, and what's great is St. Helena has a lot to offer there. So, we take that strategy, those goals, and these objectives, and we apply it to all of our efforts. And we start here tonight with the Welcome Center. We see roughly between 30 to 50 people a day, and serves over about 17,000 people a year. And we currently have four part-time concierges who keep the Welcome Center open seven days a week. We participate in the county's guest service network, which is run by Visit Napa Valley, and really brings together all Welcome Centers in the valley to streamline our processes and our procedures. A grant from Visit Napa Valley, along with a portion of the city contract, keeps the Welcome Center open, and it keeps it welcoming. In 2015, we updated the St. Helena brand to speak to who St. Helena really is while complimenting our main, Napa Valley's Main Street motto. It's important for us to know who we are, so that our advertising can be authentic, and so that it can resonate with people. Working with a creative agency, we've developed a small-town, big experience, which kind of lends itself to many applications. Here you can see we're using small-town, big memories, small-town, big taste, small-town, big style, especially when we're talking with shopping. We've also used things like small-town, big characters when we're doing profiles on winemakers and different, and chefs. So, you can see that we feel like these campaigns really can be used in a lot of different ways. We now have new taglines from which to develop many interrelated campaigns and a go-to brand book that can be used universally by our businesses and by the city to send a consistent message about visitors. And this is the brand book I've handed out, kind of gives you an idea of the colors and everything else that we use now to provide that consistent message. Using the branding, we've replaced our outdated website with a more user-friendly, mobile-enhanced site. Best practices today lean towards the show-don't-tell kind of format, which shows beautiful images on your landing pages rather than a lot of content, and this allows us to really draw the visitors in. Stlena.com is the first contact visitors have with our city, and so having a website that invokes their curiosity and makes them want to explore is necessary. Content now is in blog format, storytelling, describing experiences, which, and enticing offers, which are designed to keep the visitors really staying on the site longer and diving deeper into explore. These kind of websites can cost up to $100,000, and we feel this one really looks like it. We had a budget of $15,000 and a very short deadline from June 2015 to December 2015 to get to pull this thing off. We were lucky to be able to invest in a new marketing director who's here tonight, Carolyn Hernandez, who did a lot of this work, and I really want to sort of tip my hat to her tonight for a lot of the work that you see here. She's done a fantastic job, and having good staff really makes a difference. We know the strategy's working, then that our average session time has doubled, and our bounce rate is now down by 32 percent. Bounce rate, bounces when somebody goes to the site and then immediately goes off because it's not what they wanted. And so, we had a lot of people who were drawn to there for some reason and then left, and so when they actually go and stay on the site and then dive deeper is what you're looking So, this shows that our businesses are seeing the results as well. It's a great testimonial showing that analytics are up, their website sessions are up, and the average minutes that people stay on the site, in this case, six minutes, is well above the industry average. So, we're excited to see that our businesses are noticing the results as well. We invested quite a bit of our budget on online advertising through NapaValley.com and our digital campaigns. These are the digital ads that show up in your Facebook feed, or in, when you're playing Solitaire, or something like that, and, you know, we've got a minute to get you to click through on those. And this is something where we really spent a good portion of the budget in your packet, and in the agenda, you'll see a lot of the results of that. I didn't want to bore everybody with a lot of statistics, but they are in your packet because we wanted to show you how we're doing. Improving the click-through rates. Click-through is when they click on the site and then need to click through to a different page. It's an important metric because it shows that people are attracted to our message enough to leave what they're doing to go to our page. You literally have a moment to get their attention, and we're really honing in on what that ad needs to look like in order to get them to click through. Receiving overall increase in our click-through rates to about 10 percent. We've added new campaigns, which has increased conversions. Conversion means collecting email addresses, or buying a passbook, or something like that, and we've increased that about 110 percent this year. We see that time on the site, or engagement, has doubled mainly due to better targeting and to the new site, and the report shows that impressions per campaign has steadily We can see huge results in our overall social media strategy, which is which we concentrated on while the website was being developed. More time and energy were there, and you can see the results are evident. There are many options for print media, and most of them are expensive and hard to measure the results. So, we spend more money on digital, and, but we feel that there's more bang for the buck in digital. However, when we have the opportunity to make a splash in print, we take it, and we feel Grail is that opportunity. It's dedicated to luxury, it attracts high-end, and experience-oriented, those visitors who are looking for experiences tend to pick up something like Grail. It's distributed to high-income groups, it ends up in the patron bag at the San Francisco Opera and at charity events in Silicon Valley. And this year, we decided to use our culinary campaign. It's designed to position Califor, or St. Helena as the culinary capital of Napa Valley, and this showcases our chefs and their gardens. Sprinkle throughout that magazine, you're going to see our retailers, and those businesses who help highlight St. Helena and this overall Napa Valley guide, but St. Helena is a very strong presence. PR is our, oops, there we go, keeps moving, sorry. PR is our, is another effort, we put that in a best, in one of our best tools to keep St. Helena in the news. We contracted in October with a new PR firm, and it's already delivering results. Strategic pitches on our culinary theme this year were realized when St. Helena was named the fifth nationally in an online contest put on by USA Today for the best food scene. In August, Sunset Magazine will determine the winner of their best-of contests. St. Helena's running, is in the running, and in a finalist in two categories. The categories are best food and best shopping. At this point, we've submitted, we were picked, and now the editors will choose who the finalists are, so we're one of three for either of those categories. So, we're hopeful that St. Helena comes out on top on one of those Sunset Magazine's contests. We continue to gain earned media stories in publications such as food and wine, and now have a fully stocked press room on our website to find articles written about St. Helena, as well as beautiful images. These images you're seeing throughout the presentation are assets that help us tell a consistent message about who St. Helena is. Okay, so, she's right, and this is not the best. But this is my fault, not theirs fault, this is, I'm going to make that clear. Knowing, knowing that weddings is an incredibly lucrative business in Napa Valley and in the country, and leveraging these opportunities that we have in St. Helena to host weddings, we conducted, our PR team conducted and successfully hosted a fam trip, familiarization trip, where we actually bring journalists to St. Helena specifically for an itinerary-driven week. They were here for four days, where they were able to really dive deep into what our businesses can offer in the way of weddings and romance. Our participating businesses held nothing back, and it really showed off their venues, really used their decor and all the possibilities for getting married in St. Helena. And we expect to see stories throughout the year. These, they were thoroughly entertained, and the businesses did an amazing job. It was really four days of just a lot of food, and a lot of really beautiful flowers, and some neat setups for weddings. These assets, we took advantage of the whole thing by taking pictures, and you can see here the assets that we're able to get. These are the images that we're able to use year-round, and that the journalists have access to, to really showcase what a St. Helena wedding can look like. Brand positioning, a new website, online advertising, print media, and PR were the focus in 2015. This year, we plan to continue investing in these lines of marketing. We're now able to do more now that the website has launched, and we'll be investing more in the different digital ads and PR efforts. One of the things I want to do, it shows some statistics to help put our efforts into perspective. First, this shows the chamber funding sources. Unlike our counterparts to the north and immediate south of us, the St. Helena Chamber still receives a bulk of our funding from our members. The city contract gives us a good portion to work with. The Visit Napa Valley grant is specific to the Welcome Center operations, and our St. Helena TID directs us to improve occupancy and ADR, or that heads-to-beds, and that's where those monies go. So, appropriately, our spending focus is on marketing. The chamber has outlined several metrics to determine whether or not our marketing is working. One basic element is looking at our overall TOT. St. Helena's TOT is steadily increasing, along with occupancy and ADR. Skipping around. There we go. We also look at the city's sales tax as an indicator of our success. Our sales tax has been rising in the last few years. This was taken from the budget, and I'm sorry, it's a little blurry, but take my word for it, sales tax is up 3.8 percent. We also watch, let's see, knowing that those numbers don't tell the whole story, oops, sorry, there we go, we got it. Knowing that those numbers don't tell the whole story, we also use anecdotal results from our business to see if we're moving in the right direction. And this one looks a little blurry, but it says, is marketing, is a marketing campaign you believe has helped your business? The top one says destination marketing. Overall, promotion of St. Helena is way out ahead. The other one, if these, if any of these chamber programs do you believe helps your business, and again, destination marketing is over and above what the businesses believe is helping their businesses. I want to show this one first. Although we're showing strides compared to what we've done in the past, we need to stay connected to what is happening in the county to see where St. Helena's doing overall. We continue to spend less on destination marketing, oop, that's the wrong one, sorry. This is not. There we go. We need to see what's happening in the other counties. Basically, this is a slide that I've been asked to show several times whenever I do a presentation, because people like to see where TOT is in Napa County. As you can see here, St. Helena is, is 10 percent of our budget, and other jurisdictions are actually doing much more with their TOT. The other point here, I think we can point out, is that with 215 rooms, even if we doubled our rooms, we're still behind Yountville, and only, in that case, would beat out American One more before that. This is, this is year-over-year growth, and that's 2011 to 2012, year-over-year growth, showing that we had a 4.6 percent increase in our TOT as compared to some of our other neighbors who had bigger year-over-year growth. The second one is 2013 to 14, and you can see we only had 4 percent growth where other jurisdictions were seeing a little bit more. So, our growth rate is okay, but it's, I still believe there's a lot more we can do with our TOT. This last slide I put together sort of at the request way back when of the AdHoc Task Force, and then later, when the council started talking about sales tax. We asked, we were talking about whether or not visitors are paying the sales tax, and how we could possibly tell, and this really has nothing to do with the marketing, but I just thought I'd throw this one in. But, what I did finally was, we worked with the county, and the finance director and I talked a little bit about what might work here. The idea here was that I plotted sales tax, their peaks and valleys quarter-over-quarter from 2013 to 2015, along with our TOT, which is the blue line. And you can kind of see that there is a pattern, that peaks and valleys kind of flow. My interpretation of that is that, yes, when there are visitors in town, the sales tax tends to rise, and tends to go down when visitors are not in town. So, I think that the last couple of slides, I just wanted you to keep in mind as you move forward on the other discussions that you have tonight, and that this one I thought was something interesting just to think about. So, that is our overall marketing report for this year, and we look forward to doing, continuing the hard work, and we're proud of the work we're done. We think that everything we're doing is moving in the right direction, and we hope you think so too. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Can you go back just real quickly to the?
I hope so.
To the, yeah. You had a slide that had ADR for us.
Yes.
And can you comment on, I mean, our TOT growth is, I mean, it's related to a number of keys, but the total amount is really related to occupancy and ADR, right? That drives the TOT entirely.
Right.
And how do we compare to the other communities with respect to ADR and occupancy specifically?
So, Calistoga has 720 hotel rooms versus, you know, Yountville's 400. Also, Calistoga's rooms tend to be older, where Yountville's hotel rooms tend to be newer, so, as that would work out, Yountville is seeing a very high ADR, and last year, finally reported, I think consistently month-over-month during season, close to $500 a night for their ADR, where ours is 266. I would say Calistoga's about even with us, but they have obviously more hotel rooms, but they're about even at 260. And the rest of the, of the, the unincorporated is higher, and when you think about unincorporated hotels, you're talking about Solage, you're talking about Meadowwood, and Canaros Inn, which tend to be higher, so their ADR is higher than ours.
But.
Oh, not Solage, I'm sorry, Calistoga Ranch.
Calistoga Ranch.
Calistoga Ranch.
Obéerge, Canaros.
Canaros, Meadowwood, so their ADR tends to be higher than ours. City of Napa is very close to ours. The average for Napa Valley is about 262, I believe.
Right.
So, we're right there with the average.
Then an occupancy?
But definitely Yountville throws it off. Occupancy?
Yountville's like in the 80 percent range, right?
Eighty, they're 80.
How about Calistoga, do you have any idea?
Calistoga is in this, they're about same as us, but again, 720 hotel rooms, so their occupancy is lower. Yountville's an anomaly, you know, they've got, you know, 80 percent at $500 a night. Nobody, nobody else is doing that.
Increasing, you know, in terms of increasing TOT, we have room for occupancy and ADR.
Absolutely. We have that, and we, you know, one of the ways is to, is to definitely And we, you know, one of the ways is to definitely help our current hotels improve, and really do what we can to help them up their game, you know? Improve their rooms, improve their offerings, make sure that they have what they need to do that, expand. So business retention, obviously helping the current businesses and the current hotels do better. And then obviously, with the Los Ocolbus coming online, hopefully in September, that will be a higher ADR. But obviously, you know, getting a higher end, and again, goes back to that high-quality, low-impact, getting hotels here with, that have a higher ADR at night, you know, $300, $400 a night, you know, fewer rooms but higher quality, you know, is one way to really drive occupancy and ADR. And then, as a result, ultimately, DOT.
But everything you're doing with respect to creating this image and this reason to be here, the experience?
Yes.
The food you're getting, the retail should help increase demand, which ultimately will increase price, right?
Absolutely. And that's the thing. I mean, that's why the TID, which is controlled by lodging, the funding comes from lodging, definitely wants us to continue with the culinary campaign, wants us to continue with the wedding, continue with all of those campaigns, because, you know, once people choose to stay here, then they need something to do, and so obviously, and they want them to come back. So obviously promoting everything and not just lodging is extremely important.
How much, and this is a tough question, but how much room do you think we have for growth with the existing assets we already have? Is it 20% growth? Is it 30% growth in terms of revenue, which is TOT? Just by, you know, improvements in what we already have and what we can work with?
You know, we only have 215 hotel rooms, and a lot of those are at Harvest Inn. I mean, they, you know, you would have to add a few rooms, and how many can you add to the Wyandale? How many can you add to El Bonita? Otherwise, the other hotel rooms you're talking about are bed and breakfasts, which sit in residential areas. So how much, you know, it's not a whole lot of improvement you can do there either. So without adding new ones, I don't see huge increases in TOT. You're going to be able to add a few hotel rooms here and there, but, and some improvements, but you're not going to make huge strides in TOT until the Los Ocolbus comes online, or you're able to get another 50, 50, 60 rooms in St. Helena.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, okay. Very good. Thank you very much. That takes us to proclamations. Drink of water here. And we have three proclamations, and we're going to begin with Mental Health Month. Mental Health Month 2016. Whereas one in four individuals will experience mental health issues in their lifetimes, which can affect patients, sisters, brothers, spouses, coworkers, and others in our lives, and whereas it is essential to eliminate disparities in mental health by promoting well-being for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, language, place of residence, or age, and ensure equity of access, delivery of services, and improvement of outcomes, and whereas the Mental Health Division seeks to reduce barriers to access, improve community outreach and engagement, and ensures culturally and linguistically competent care to diverse communities through culturally competent services and policies, and whereas while there is still much work to be done to eliminate disparities in services and increase education about mental illness, Napa County service providers are to be commended for their collaborative approach when working with individuals in need, and whereas a holistic approach to services which includes prevention and early intervention is an effective way to meet the needs of individuals at risk of developing mental health issues, individuals who are experiencing an early onset of the symptoms of mental illness, or individuals with serious mental illness or severe emotional disturbance, and whereas there is a strong body of research documenting that with support and treatment between 70% and 90% of the individuals with mental illness have a significant reduction in symptoms and improved quality of life, and whereas every Napa County resident can be an ally by learning about and dispelling the myths related to mental illness and eliminating stigma by treating individuals with mental illness with respect. Now therefore, I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, does hereby proclaim May 2016 as Mental Health Month, Mental Health Month. As the Mayor of St. Helena, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in St. Helena, to recommit ourselves and our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, supporting our community members, so that they can take action to protect their mental health, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, dated May 10, 2016. So, thank you very much. And if you'd like to say a few words, please come to the podium and do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and members of the public, thank you very much for taking the time to recognize the month of May is Mental Health Month. This month is Green Ribbon Month, so I've put some green ribbons on the back table along with some information cards for anyone to pick up if you'd like to. We appreciate the folks recognizing this month and this issue. Deera and I just want to say a few words, kind of, I'll take the global piece, and she'll take the local piece. So the theme this month, or this year, is Before Stage Four. So let me explain just a minute about what that means. When we think about cancer, heart disease, or diabetes, we don't usually wait years to treat those problems. We start way before people have severe, persistent, or even life-threatening symptoms, and that's what we call stage four. So if we're effective, we begin with prevention, and folks with those diseases who have a persistent cough, or high blood pressure, or high blood sugar, we try immediately to reverse those symptoms. And that's what we should be doing with people with mental illness. When they first experience symptoms, such as loss of sleep, feeling tired, no reason to go on, feeling anxious, that's when we should act. And these early symptoms might never become serious, but like a cough, they could go away on their own. But when they do not go away, it typically takes up to 10 years to first, the symptoms appear, until someone gets a correct diagnosis and proper treatment. So that means by ignoring these early signs, we lose 10 years in our ability to intervene more effectively and change lives for the better. So even though, even when we don't intervene right away, and serious mental illness gets worse and disrupts people's lives, we can still act effectively. We can all do this. We can offer people choices and supports to help them recover, and these include a variety of services that are available here in Napa County, both through the county mental department and our partners, including the Uvalde Resource Center. So intervening as early as possible preserves education, employment, social supports, housing. It costs less than the all-too-common shovel we see, unfortunately, revolving door of incarceration, hospitalization, and homelessness. So thank you again.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you again to the city council and mayor for the proclamation on this important, in this important month, important issue. Uvalde Family Centers offers community-based mental health services in partnership with several organizations, the school districts, and individual providers. Our organization delivers a broad range of services and connections to individuals in need of mental health services. We partner with Mentis of Napa, Aldea Family Services, Napa County Health and Human Services, and with private therapists and counselors on sliding scale fees. With the St. Helena School District, we have provided more than 80, we have helped more than 80 students that have received mental health services. We have four licensed mental health therapists that are in charge of helping the students and, you know, doing consultations and eventually treatment. Also, with Mentis of Napa County, we have two counselors who come and provide services to adults and individuals who are needed. We also provide couple support groups, and, you know, these are groups specifically for families who are going through difficult times, domestic violence, alcohol, and drug abuse, or substance abuse. Also, this year, we began providing services on Triple P, is a positive parenting program, an evidence-based program that we feel can help many of these families with the students who are in counseling, receiving already counseling services, or they are on the waiting list. It will be a nice complement to the services that we already offer through Mentis. Five of our staff members received accreditation in mid-March, and we began providing the services immediately. We are excited that we had this opportunity to work one-on-one with families and parents. Starting tonight, we are offering a Triple P Parenting Education Discussion Group here in St. Helena at the Presbyterian Church. Another program that I would like to mention is our Promotora Program, which is a volunteer program. At this point, we have 11 women volunteer in the Upper Valley, and the goal for this program is the dissemination of information and resources available for residents in need of mental health services. The emphasis of this group is the reduction of stigma and discrimination in mental health services. So finally, I would like to offer our phone number for referrals. Anybody can call us if they are looking for mental health services. And our number here in St. Helena is 707-963-1919. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is National Public Works Week, May 15 through 21st. Carlos, good.
Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of this community, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, storm, water management, streets and highways, public buildings and grounds, parks, solid waste collection, and waste processing, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works personnel, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments and offices is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, now therefore, be it resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, St. Helena Council, city staff, and the citizens of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21st, 2016, to be National Public Works Week, and encourage all citizens and civic organizations to inquite themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated May 10, 2016. And of course, this goes to what we were previously discussing in terms of Public Works Week, and getting out there and visiting the facilities.
I just want to, once again, reiterate, Carlos Public Works Manager, reiterate about taking the opportunity to take those tours. Really encourage you guys to go out there. They start, I think we have the flyers that go online, and you can see, we start on Tuesday, the 17th, and they go through Wednesday and Thursday. So they're in the afternoon, they're pretty, they're going to be pretty short, but I encourage you guys to go out. Same thing if anyone from the council or any other staff. Be glad to have them.
Thank you.
Municipal City Clerks Week. And Zinnia Camaro and Cindy Black, would you like to come up, please? Good, welcome. All right. Whereas the city council extends appreciation to all municipal city clerks for the services with which they provide their communities. Specifically, the proclamation cites that the clerk, quote, "serves as the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels," end quote. Whereas the city, whereas city clerks pledge to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service, all continually striving to improve the administration of their duties through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, city, and international professional organizations. Whereas the city, whereas the St. Helena City Clerk's Office serves the city as the election official, political reform filing officer, and custodian of the city's seal, conduct city elections, administer the oath of office, and provide support to the city council, and record all council proceedings, manage the city's records, and responds to public records requests. The office also debates council meetings, agendas, and packets in accordance with the Brown Act, and oversees agendas for the city's boards, commission, committees, and maintains the appointment list, maintains the municipal code, is the free agent, is the agent authorized to accept service for legal documents, and attests to the records executed by the mayor. Whereas Cindy Black has served as the St. Helena City Clerk since September 2015, acting city clerk since March 2014, and working in municipal government since 1988. She is also a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, IIMC, and the City Clerks Association of California, CCAC. And whereas Ms. Black has advised that she is recently and happily engaged, now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through 7, 2016, in St. Helena, dated May 10, 2016. And we have.
She's got time to be engaged?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, I am thrilled to pieces to be your city clerk, and I'm also thrilled to pieces that Zinnia, get up here, she clerks the planning commission meetings, and we are here for you, and for the community, and just delighted to be in this capacity.
Thank you for your work.
This takes us to staff briefing, water revenue update by Ms. Mitts, Finance Director.
So, thank you very much, Mayor, council members. Tonight's going to be a little less slides than the last time we all met, so instead of 188 slides, I only have one tonight, so probably happy for me to report on that. I'll wait till the slide comes up. At our last quarterly update, so our third quarter update, we did have some just concerning news just regarding our water revenues. So city council has asked me to come back with monthly updates, just to keep you aware of the progress that we've made. So the top line, you'll see our adopted 1516 budget, what our actuals were as of our mid-year budget review, so that was as of 1231, 2015. And so at our mid-year budget review, as mentioned previously, we had collected 52% of the revenues, so we were on track, and we were not estimating a shortfall at that time. For the last quarterly update meeting that we had, it was, I believe, the first meeting in April, you can see that our percentage of revenues collected was 64%, and then our projected, as opposed to being the 4.5 million, almost 4.6 million we thought we would collect, we're looking at about 4.1 million, so we're looking at about a $434,000 shortfall. The updated numbers, this ran through the end of April, so approximately a month after our last numbers. Right now, our actual collected is a 2.3, almost 2, or sorry, 3.1, almost 3.2 million dollars we've collected. This is 69% of our revenues are projected now at the end of the year, we're estimating about 4.1 million, so a shortfall of still about $430,000 for our water revenue fund. So I wanted to be able to give you the update, and I will, again, provide more monthly updates as we get them.
Right. I might add here, there's nothing unique about our situation. This is commonplace across California, light of the conservation orders. The silver lining in this, though, is that our water usage is well below the 1950 acre feet that we set as the safe yield, and that opens up some space at the discretion of the city council for projects that are in the public interest. So at the end of the day, I think it's important for people to continue to conserve, but it also gives the city some flexibility.
it might not otherwise have. That would be my quick comment on that.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, consent items. So, we're gonna go through the consent calendar, and again, if anybody wishes any item removed from consent, just say so. That means anybody in the public or any member of the council. 10, consideration and proposed approval of regular and special meetings of, and these are city council meetings going from January 12, 2016, through May 4, 2016, a major project. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving an employment agreement with Cindy Black to serve as an executive at-will city clerk. 12, and here, attachment two has been updated by Public Works. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement in the amount of $3,500 with Green Valley Consulting Engineering for the Design of Homes Tank Upgrade Capital Improvement Project W-86.
I have a brief question on that one, I'd like to pull it.
Okay. 13, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the St. Helena Community Ban to Host Musical Entertainment, Mobile Food Truck, and Vendors at Lyman Park on Sunday, July 3, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and waive the encroachment permit fee of $200 and the noise permit fee of $25. 14, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution accepting the work and directing the filing of the Notice of Completion of the Stonebridge Filter Rehabilitation Project CIP W-102. 15, second reading and proposed adoption of amendments Title 17 zoning of the municipal code initiated by the City of St. Helena to implement provisions of the city's adopted 2015-2023 housing element that requires the city to, one, eliminate the requirement for use permit for multiple family residential projects proposed in the high-density residential district, eliminate the requirement for a use permit for multiple family housing projects proposed on key housing sites as designated in the 2015-2023 housing element that are located in the city's medium-density residential district. 16, second reading and proposed adoption of amendments to the City of St. Helena Municipal Code, Section 17.134, Short-Term Rentals, creating a permit renewal process, modifying the review and operations criteria, and improving enforcement mechanisms for short-term rental uses in the residential and agricultural zoning districts citywide. So, I don't hear anybody wishes to pull any other than number 12. So, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve on consent items 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
So move.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us back to item 12, which is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement in the amount of $3,500 with Green Valley Consulting Engineering for the Design of Homes Tank Upgrade. What was your question?
Yeah, I don't need a full-blown staff report. I just had some concern and maybe need for an explanation as to why the staff anticipates that construction costs may exceed the existing budget.
Right, the original cost estimate was based on a planning level cost estimate that was done a number of years ago. And as we go through engineering design and get our 30% plans done, we'll do a new engineer's estimate and update the total cost at that time. It was just precautionary, we don't really have a good budget this time for construction cost estimate right now. So, I just let in the council know that as we go through design, we'll do a new engineer's estimate. We may need to come back for more money to finish the project.
All right, and this is the tank that's above lower reservoir?
That's correct, that's correct. And the project is primarily, well, it is, right now, the scope includes replacing the pipe that feeds that tank and replacing the pump station and building a new pump station, actually, at the bottom of the hill, and some upgrades to the Palmer Drive Station, probably taking that one out of service at this time.
Do I have a different report, because this talks about putting a backup generator in?
That's right, that's what the...
That being the scope change that caused the increase, or it's that plus an abundance of caution?
Yes, it's both.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
I would move approval of the item.
Item 12.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Approved as amended?
Yes.
Sit.
Yeah, there was a minor amendment to, attachment to, that I mentioned.
That's fine, as amended.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right, that takes us to new business, item 17. Options for the development of city-owned properties at Adam Street, 1480 Main Street, which is City Hall Police Station, and 1572-1574 Railroad Avenue. And Ms. Phillips?
Yes, thank you very much. So, this item is another opportunity for the city council to discuss next steps for the city-owned parcels. The parcel we refer to is Adam Street, 1480 Main Street, and then the Railroad Avenue Properties, which is the teen center, and some office buildings that we currently rent out. And so, back in October 2015, staff presented a conceptual request for proposals in very rough form, and we wanted to know if council was interested in moving forward on that type of a process. The idea of the RFP came out of the goal setting. Again, as a reminder of how the public process works, the reason that we have an annual goal setting with the council is the council determines the goals that they would like to accomplish, and from those goals comes policies. It's staff's responsibility to identify different types of policies, different types of opportunities for the council's consideration and the community's input. And so, when we bring forward something like an RFP, we're working off of the council goals, which indicated to staff and the community that they were interested in looking at different options for hotels. There was an interest in securing, the overall goal was securing the city's financial future, and through that was looking at opportunities to increase TOT. That specifically came out of your goal setting in 2015. And so, that's what drives the staff process, just so everybody understands, that's how it works. And so, working off of the council goals, looking at the things that you wanted to achieve, staff then brings forward policies and options for council to consider. And so, this RFP came from that process, like many other things do in government, especially in local government. And so, in October, Noah presented to you this draft RFP. We had one also for the City Hall property. I didn't include that this time because so much discussion has happened with the Adam Street property. That RFP is nearly ready to go as well, but it's not included in this discussion, per se. We're specifically talking about Adam Street from an RFP standpoint. When that happened, council gave us directive, yes, we like that, go forward and issue the RFP. On March 22nd, we had a community group calling themselves Rebuild St. Helena, request, they'd come to several different public comments, and they'd requested to have an opportunity to make a presentation before the city council. That happened in March. As a result of that presentation, the council was unsure at that point, sort of next steps. They were interested and certainly appreciated the work of Rebuild St. Helena, they listened to all the comments. And we sort of got to a point at the end of the meeting that it was sort of an unsure next steps. And so, I had made a suggestion that's also included in this staff report of a different option than the RFP. And so, what we thought we'd do this time was bring the RFP back to you. We wanted you to see it in final form, because it came in a very rough form. We wanted you to see the quality of work and the effort that's gone into that product. We think it's very, very good. We think it will generate a great deal of interest in business. We have quite a long list of individuals who are interested in seeing that RFP and potentially responding. And so, that would be one choice for the council to go ahead and direct us to issue that RFP. A second choice, which is what I mentioned at the end of our meeting in March, was we could scrap that RFP process and develop a new RFP to hire an architecture firm that would take a look at our three properties, so the Adam Street property, the railroad properties, and the City Hall properties, and develop some proposals for councils and communities' consideration. And I think the key to that is there needs to be a revenue and expense estimate included in those proposals. So, one proposal potentially could be the visioning process that the community went through. So, that the community understands that it's not a very revenue-generating vision, which is fine, but it's not, and the cost to construct it, the cost to maintain it, and the cost to operate it. And as we know, we haven't been very good stewards of our infrastructure, and so, when we build something new, we have to build it in a sinking fund, and we have to take better care than we have in decades past. And so, I think it's really important that that's included in the proposals. Then they could take a look at City Hall, what would it cost to raise and rebuild City Hall and the police station, and then maybe determine something potentially creative could go on, the railroad properties. A second option would be to have them basically draw up a hotel project on the Adam Street property, then raise and rebuild the City Hall as is, and then maybe do something on the railroad property. And a third proposal could be something we haven't thought of. That's where the architecture firms use their experience, what mixture could happen on those three properties. And so, that would be a second choice that the council could have. I've never done an RFP like that. Noah and I feel it would probably run $75,000 to $100,000, because you'd get an architecture firm, they'd have to have some subs to be able to do the financial part of it, you have to create these proposals. And so, that's sort of roughly what we think, and that funding would have to come from the assigned general fund reserves. There's no revenue, there's no available monies to do that. What Noah and I had thought, Planning Director and I had thought through this process, was that the free market would do that for us. So, by putting out the RFP for Adam Street and putting out the RFP for City Hall, it was basically saying to the development community, hey, what do you think? What could you build on this and give us an opportunity to review it? So, I think the end product ends up being very similar, it's the process by which we get there. And so, Planning Director and I wanted to offer those two options out to you, and we're happy to try to answer any questions you might have about either one of those options.
Well, are there any preliminary questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
Could you, you know, if you did the RFP, is it also an option to say, look, let's look at ideas for Adam Street plus City Hall, but not go through the architectural design and estimation process and see what people come back with, where it's sort of a twofer? Or do we feel like people won't be interested in engaging in both of them?
Which RFP are you talking about? The RFP that we designed for Adams?
No. An RFP that's sort of a combined Adams plus City Hall.
The...
Yeah.
So, when we brought the original proposal, the idea was to issue both concurrently but separately, and just reference each RFP in the alternative one, so that way folks who are reviewing one knew that the other was available to give options for the creativity that you're talking about, but also not require one be bound to the other. That was the intent of having them originally, the original request or proposal was to issue them concurrently, but have them not, one developer doesn't have to respond to both.
In that way, if someone liked doing both, they could propose to do both.
Correct, and one of the requests of Rebuild St. Helena was not to issue the City Hall RFP, because they believe that, and their proposal was, to build a hotel on Adam Street and then raise and rebuild City Hall at its current location with revitalizing Lyman Park. And so, that's why we pulled back, we didn't really get clear direction from council, so we just pulled back on the City Hall RFP and finalized, because it was a lot of work to finalize the Adam Street RFP. And if you weren't interested, I didn't want to waste staff time. And so, we just finalized the Adam Street RFP, but we could certainly finalize the City Hall RFP. We could merge the two. I mean, these are just choices, I mean, I think there's other choices. So, if council were interested, we could design a different process.
So, I have another option I want to propose. What's the appropriate time, after we've had a public comment on what's on the agenda?
There's no legal constraint on this. It would be appropriate, I think, for you to do it now, that would allow the public to weigh in on that. But there's certainly no legal constraint either way.
Is the council fine with that? So, this is sort of a, you know, I think we've all struggled with what's gonna happen to Adam Street. This is maybe a little contrarian view of how we can monetize Adam Street, but it's one that came to us in a collective sort of discussion last week that I've been thinking a lot about and talking with some folks about. You know, we've owned this site for 16 years. It was acquired with the vision that it would be for civic-serving purposes, park and/or open space. We've sort of been stuck, we haven't done anything for 16 years with it. And now, we're thinking about selling it, potentially, to generate revenue, TOT, you know, sales price, which is, you know, a great option to have. We've land-banked it. I'm reluctant to go down that path before I understand what do the citizens really want? We've carried this thing for a long time. And so, I started thinking about, is there a way, A, we can ask the citizens what do they want, and maybe tie that to an option that includes generating revenue through keeping it for its original intent? If we're gonna retain it, we've got to find a way to generate additional revenue, because we're essentially, that would, you know, partially offset or totally offset or exceed what we would get if we were to sell it and say, let a hotel be built there that would generate TOT in perpetuity. So, my, you know, the idea that, it's not my idea, it's an idea that was sort of born in the last week, is one where maybe we could do something along the lines of, we do, instead of a half percent sales tax increase, we make it 1%, but that extra half percent above sort of the half percent we've been discussing and will discuss later tonight is partially earmarked towards keeping, retaining, preserving, and ultimately improving Adam Street with the original sort of realm or vision that we acquired, that we first acquired it, you know, keeping that in mind. And, you know, keeping the commitment to civic-serving purposes, open space, parks. If it were to pass, then the public would have said, look, we're supportive of this. We're okay with a higher sales tax. And by the way, there's a lot of things sales tax doesn't apply to, and a lot of that cost would be borne by people that are coming here, spending the day, spending a week, spending a weekend, you know, buying things, not your everyday groceries. It wouldn't affect that, doesn't affect a long list of things, including pharmacy, you know, medicine, groceries, you know, rent utilities, all that stuff, right? Doesn't impact. And I think that, and I ran some numbers, and they're very preliminary, you know? But I said, what's a 1% tax increase mean over a 100-year period? What's a half cent tax increase mean over a 100-year period? What could we get out of a hotel? Through selling the site upfront, and then seeing it get built, and ultimately generating TOT, assuming it got approved, which I have a little bit of fear that it might be something we could fight over as a community for a decade. And what does that look like over, you know, 100 years? And interestingly, you know, and you can play with the assumptions on what TOT would generate, but with 80 keys there and a 550 starting rate, and I increase everything consistently across these different categories, 70% occupancy, you know, the amount of TOT plus sales proceeds, if we sold it for 16 million, which is more than the appraisal says that it's worth for its highest and best use, the amount of cash we'd get over 100 years is slightly less than what we'd get from the half percent above and beyond the half percent we're considering. And so, the numbers sort of match, but then you say, well, wait a second, we didn't give that site away. We still have it, right? And we have, we create a funding source to actually do something with that site. And so, and if the citizens say, guess what? We don't like this, we don't want it, we don't want to do it, then the alternative is very clear at that point. We've chosen as a community that we don't want to keep that site and incur the burden or cost of, you know, keeping that site, and we're okay with it being sold, developed as a hotel or some mixed-use project to generate revenue for the city. And so, we've done it in a real democratic way with great transparency, where everyone has a say if they want to come out and vote on it. What are the downsides? The downsides are, we might lose six months, because if it didn't pass, you know, we could immediately go out with the RFP, but we'd probably say, okay, now let's go put the half-cent tax increase on a special ballot, which would cost us a little bit more, $25,000, $26,000 to do, and we'd have to, we'd wait six months to actually see that revenue coming in. So, there are some risks. But when I look at it, I think that having something like this attached to the sales tax increase might get people really behind it. It creates a, you know, a revenue stream, part of which, you know, I was just rough numbers. Maybe we take 25% of the 1%, which is $700,000 a year, based on current sales revenue, and that would be earmarked for improving whatever we all decide as a community we want to do on that parcel, and then setting aside sinking reserves for it and covering operations, whether it's, you know, civic uses, park, open space, whatever it is, amphitheater. We then have an actual bucket of money to ultimately do that with. We can wait 10 years, save the money up and do it, we can take debt against that cash flow stream that will be coming in. But we actually have an option versus no option, which is where we are right now. Then we could take the other 25% of the 1%, right, and use that and say, we're gonna use that for, you know, roads, sidewalks, downtown, you know, repair of streets and street scape, and maybe park improvements and maintenance, which sort of lack right now. We have no foreseeable bucket to cover those things over time. We have no foreseeable bucket to cover those things over time. Water and wastewater, you know, rates will increase to cover those things. But then, you know, we've covered things that aren't being addressed right now and there's no source of revenue for it. And then we have the other half percent that would be similar to issuing a measure for a half percent towards the general fund that would be there as well. So you'd have the half, half percent going towards general fund and then, and whether that other half percent is split as I described, it's just, it's an idea, right? It's a starting point for discussion. So, that's the alternative. And, you know, what really spawned this idea was getting a letter from someone saying, what about, I hear a lot about what are we going to do with Adams Street, but what about, you know, holding on to it and maintaining it, not selling it? And that was the inspiration for this concept. And I think it's merits discussion. I think it's something we should be considering in our, in our sort of, our choices and our options here. And curious to ask everyone else's thoughts, including the public.
There's a lot to absorb there.
It's a lot.
Let me absorb for a while. And with the permission of the council, I'll open public comment.
Can I just ask one question? Is it possible to split? Well, first of all, if, as, wouldn't there be a higher threshold for passing if the money was targeted for just maintenance?
Yes, it would be a two-thirds vote, correct.
So is there a way to separate out the sales tax on the ballot? In other words, so that one half, point, .5% just a general sales tax for the general fund, you can vote yes or no for that, and .5% for Adams Street? You can vote yes or no for that, but it will only be passed with a two-thirds percent majority? Is it possible to do that or not?
Yes, you could have two initiatives. We have found in our experience that when you have multiple initiatives on a ballot, you tend to frustrate.
Everybody's no.
And everybody's no. The challenge is if we, you potentially could lose the 50% that's so desperately needed for the general fund and still get the 50% or the half percent for the Adams Street property, which is good if that's what the council's desire is, but then you have no additional revenue stream for the operations of the city.
Right, right. I just was wondering if it was legally possible.
Yes, I believe that you could, yes.
Very good question.
I just one question in terms of the mechanism of using or potentially using monies from the sales tax for Adams Street in general terms. That would be an income stream, but how would we, would we create a bond if we wanted to build buildings based on that income stream? Could we possibly do that? Because we need the money, we'd need the money upfront. We couldn't just say, well, we're going to pay it off over time. So you'd have to be able to use that income stream to be the source of revenue for some kind of a bond measure, I guess, right?
That's correct. But keep in mind too, that what I've talked about as we've gone through these financial challenges is that the city has to be in a good financial position so that when we float bonds, that we have a reasonable interest rate. So with a low general fund, you know, without reasonable revenues, without sort of having our financial house in order, we stand the risk of having a much higher interest rate, which costs then the taxpayers much more when we borrow money. But yes, if our house is in order and you were to, and the citizens were to pass that measure, we could use that income stream for bonding. And then you could build, and again, when you bond, it usually doubles the cost of the project because the interest paid over a 20-year period. So if you pay as you go and you put the money aside, and let's say a building costs you ten million dollars, it'll ultimately cost the taxpayer twenty million dollars by doing it through a bond.
I would only make one quick observation, just in terms of sales tax rates. Today, the sales tax rate is 8%. 1% or one percentage point is a mandatory statewide tax that goes back to local communities. That's the source of our 1% tax. The county's considering Measure Y. It's going to be on the ballot in June. That's a .25% countywide sales tax increase. If that passes, that will bring the sales tax up to 8.25%. If you add another percent, you're up to 9.25%. The highest we've ever been in St. Helena, as far as I can tell, based upon the statistical section in the CAFER with which I've become quite familiar, is 8.75%. So it's a very significant sales tax increase when you look at it that way, both in terms of a full percentage point. I think the state says basically, when you consider raising sales taxes, think about it in terms of increments of .125. So it's a very large sales tax increase. And it's well above what we've historically experienced here in this community. That's just what I see.
And the county, the countywide initiative is a targeted tax. So it would, it's going to require a two-thirds.
No, it is not, no.
It's not? I thought it was targeted to compensate.
No, no. They've decided that they're, that they're going to make a political commitment that it's going to be used for the jail and for children. But it's not a special purpose tax.
And that is another option, right? We could, we could have a, what do you call it, a, some type of rider?
A non-binding companion.
Non-binding companion measure.
Right. It's just that people believe that you're actually going to spend the money on those things you said you're going to spend them on when we're all gone and someone else is running the show. So the, to that point, I don't disagree that it's a big tax increase. The flip side to that is there will be other measures that come, and there is a cap of 10%. And so other county measures could ultimately eat that up over time. This, I think, I could be wrong.
Here's the rule on that one. I spent a little time this weekend going into it because I got confused by an article in the Napa County Register dealing with Measure Y where they didn't quite state it accurately. But by state law, the total of county and city sales taxes cannot exceed 2%. But the 1% statewide mandatory local tax does not count against the 2%.
So it's really 11, or?
Well, the state can do whatever it wants otherwise. But in terms of, in terms of us, we're capped with the county at 2%, not counting the 1% that we were, not counting the 1% we get today.
So there's 2% of room over the foreseeable future?
That's correct.
And right now, some of it's being used through Measure A, but that's going to burn off, right?
Well, no, because it's going to be replaced by Measure T.
Okay.
Okay, so that's .50%. And if Measure Y passes, that's .25. So that brings it up to .75, meaning that there's 1.25 left under the cap. And if we were to chew up 1%, that would leave .25. And, you know, quite frankly, the other side of it is that as you look at how scraped local governments are and county governments are, there's going to be a real push to increase sales taxes. And it is, it is in some sense inviting, if we get our residents to go along with it, to chew up under the cap so that we get it and the county doesn't. I mean, this is...
Get it while you can.
Get it while you can.
I think that's a very important thing because, I mean, there's going to be more and more issues in the county that are going to eat it up and we won't have the opportunity to, where we have a real need for it.
We jumped into the next agenda.
Did I get something wrong there?
Oh, you're doing great.
That's the next item.
You're doing great. But I thought for convenience for the public, if I do my report on the sales tax and just provide that?
Oh, I think that's a good idea.
You've melded the conversation and then members of the public can come and speak on either topic.
Or both.
Or both.
Both, correct.
Okay.
So you want me to do that real quick?
Sure.
So item 18 tonight is consideration of a sales tax measure for the November 2016 ballot. Again, going back to the goal setting, the city council discussed a report, discussed and considered a report from the Ad Hoc Revenue Source Task Force, which talked about revenue raising options. On March 22nd, the council was presented with a survey results regarding a real property transfer tax and some information on a, on a sales tax initiative. At that time, the council determined it would not move forward with a real property transfer tax in a charter city, but instead directed staff to return with additional information about a potential sales tax. That's what this item is for you this evening, is additional information about a sales tax initiative. We've experienced minimal, minimal growth. We certainly have seen some growth in our sales tax. Our revenue sources are relatively small, and so the growth that we've seen has been fairly nominal. And so that's impacted our ability to balance our budget. Our expenses are exceeding our revenues. In addition to all of the capital expenditures and the obligations that we have towards our infrastructure, we're not meeting those, including our sinking funds and our streets and roads and all the things that we've talked about. Cities have very few options for raising revenues. Many of them were taken away from us through various ballot measures, and there's revenues we just don't have control over. And so you're seeing again, a comment that was just made, that cities are again, across California, looking at sales tax increases. So when you're, when you're looking around and you're looking at some of the communities, many communities in California are struggling with the same struggles that we've had. And we talked about this during our budget workshop. We're not alone in our challenges. Even prior to the Great Recession, many cities weren't meeting their infrastructure demands. The Great Recession just really set us all back. We extended the useful life of our vehicles. We stopped putting in sinking funds. We stopped making the road repairs that we needed to. And so St. Helena's certainly not alone. And so looking at options on how to fund some of these infrastructure needs that we have is an important part of securing our financial future and our fiscal health. And so many cities, again, are looking at their sales taxes. There are cities that are already up to 10%. And you can see around the Bay Area, nine and a half, nine and a quarter, nine and three quarters. So they range, you know, basically in the Bay Area. For us, here in Napa County, we're all at 8% currently. A sales tax is a direct tax, basically applied on consumption. And again, it ranges anywhere from seven and a half percent. So communities that have added no additional sales tax onto their communities are at the seven and a half percent, which is the six and a half that the state receives, plus the mandatory 1% for local government at seven and a half. So again, a reminder that when you go and you pay your sales tax, only 1% of that amount here in St. Helena that you're paying, only 1% goes to the city. Seven and a half, 7% goes to other, half goes to Measure A, and the rest goes back to the state. I included as an attachment, I thought, a really good document that was produced by the state that shows all the exemptions for the sales tax, because there had been some questions, what's exempt? And rather than trying to compile a list myself, that's provided for you for information purposes. Again, the main products are grocery items, non-prepared foods, and medications are certainly things that, for families that are purchasing things here in St. Helena, those items are exempt. Due to Proposition 22, which was passed in 2010, if the city passes a sales tax initiative like this, those monies stay local and the state cannot raid those monies. And that's why Prop 22, from a grassroots effort from the cities in 2010, was brought before the voters because the state had raided and raided and raided the cities. The ERAF shift and just one thing after another. And basically, local government had said, you know, that's enough. And so Prop 22 was passed, and so those monies fundamentally are secure and would stay in, any sales tax increase passed by the voters in St. Helena would stay in St. Helena. Currently, the city receives 2.8 million a year in sales tax. So a half percent would be 1.4. A full 1% sales tax initiative would be an additional 2.8 million towards our general fund. Let's see if there's anything. In addition, as Councilmember Pitts mentioned, if we're, if we're going to go with a general measure, which basically doesn't commit the funds to any specific uses, that's a 50% plus one vote. If you are going to identify specific uses, that's a two-thirds vote. The other option you would have would be a non-binding companion measure, where you could have a sales tax that's basically a general sales tax increase. And the companion measure would be, would outline potential uses for those monies, but again, would be non-binding. It would just be a recommendation from the voting community to say, yes, this is how we'd like you to spend the money. But it does not bind the city to spend it in that manner. And so it has less of a confidence level generally for voters. I was asked when we had the conversation a little bit during the budget workshop, sort of what, how a sales tax increase impacts consumer spending. And that is very difficult to quantify. I'm not an economist. I tried to do as much research as I could. You know, what I've generally found in my 25-plus years in local government is, there may be a small reaction in the beginning, but communities just generally go back to their normal purchasing habits. It really, from what I've seen, hasn't had an impact on each city that passes any kind of sales tax by their community. We would add, if the council wanted to have a measure on the November 2016 ballot, it would run between 10 and 15,000 dollars. And again, the items, aside from what Councilmember Pitts has brought up, is, staff would need direction on what the percentage increase would be. You had talked about a sunset date potentially, if you wanted to have that, whether it's a general or a special tax. And if you, if it was a general tax, if you wanted to have some sort of companion measure. So those were the directions that, in relation to the sales tax initiative we were looking for tonight. We have to bring this back before you by mid-August to meet the deadline to get it on the November election. So we're starting to get a little tightened timeline. And so that's the direction we would need if you're interested in this, so we could bring it back for your consideration.
What exactly would come back in August? The resolution or?
The ballot language, the resolution, the ordinance, and all of the ballot materials.
And at that point, we would obviously know the results of the county tax.
Yes, you would.
Measure Y.
Now, if you're interested in something that Councilmember Pitts has brought up, that would, my recommendation would be that we would bring that, because it's not agendized, that I would bring that back as an additional staff report at a meeting, at the first meeting in June, and have you consider that more publicly.
So I just have one question, and I'm asking you only because I know you probably know the answer. What is the sales tax rate in Santa Rosa? Because I was thinking, for what might impact purchasing is big-ticket items like something from St. Helena appliance, for example, versus buying it in Santa Rosa. What is the tax rate?
You know what? I have no idea because I never look. No, really, as, for me, Noah might know. Do you know? Eight and a half, nine, eight and a three-quarter?
I want to say it's 9%. I can verify.
I mean, if you're buying a $5,000 Wolf Range, you might buy it elsewhere if that were, if it was a significant difference.
All I know is that Santa Rosa has a property transfer tax to their credit, even though it's not great.
I was just curious because I was thinking that what it would impact is big purchases.
Right. And so, from my perspective, I'm the wrong type of buyer. I'm not sensitive to sales tax.
Okay.
So it doesn't, for me, it doesn't matter. It's whatever that item is, and, you know, I was just down at the Livermore outlets. That's how I happened to know. They were nine and three-quarters, which surprised me. But that's not going to keep me from driving to the Livermore outlets, I can tell you that much.
Santa Rosa's 8.75.
There you go.
That's where we were in 2009, 2010.
Right.
Okay, well, there's a lot to think about. Let me, let me open the public hearing. Got one, just one minor point here. When I think about these sales tax rates, I think it's better to express it in terms of percentage points, because otherwise it looks like it's 1% of the seven and a half percent, whereas it's really one percentage point that comes back to St. Helena. Minor, minor comment on vocabulary. But in any event, let me open it up for the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Galbraith, councilmembers and staff. I'd like to start by saying that I disagree with some of the staff report, but I see nothing to be gained by discussing that here tonight. But I would like the opportunity to discuss it with the person who wrote the staff report at a later date.
Which staff report?
The one on the Adams Street property.
All right.
You know, we've been talking about an RFP for Adams Street for such a long time. You, you have given time to a group, I forgot the name of the group, now Rebuild St. Helena, who are, quote, "very influential people." So you've given that time, and time is money. We all know that. We also know that the planning director has spent a great deal of time writing an RFP. And again, time is money. We've been reminded of that by our city manager on occasion when someone wanted a particular item. And it's been pointed out that to do that would require X number of man-hours, and time is money. The people of St. Helena attended several meetings. They put forth their desires for the Adams Street property. And it seems to me that I'm hearing short consideration being given to that, and I don't think you can. You've given consideration to this other plan. You need to listen to the taxpaying, voting citizens of St. Helena. And they have very definite ideas. There are things they want on their, the historical society would like to have some space. I would really like to see a community center. I would really like to see a community center. But, you know, I think there may be an RFP out there. By the way, no one talked about leasing. And you may get an RFP back that wants to lease the property, not sell it, not buy it. So in a situation like that, you don't know what you're going to get back, but you said you have a lot of interested people. You might get a proposal back, I should say, that will actually bring revenue to the city, solve some of the city's problems, and include most of the things that the citizens of St. Helena have asked to have put on the Adams Street property. I wish you'd go forward with the RFP now and not drag this out much longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For clarification, the RFP includes public-private partnership, a lease, or a sale.
Okay. Mr. Ellsworth?
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvaner. I kind of liked Greg's thought on keeping the property, if it takes a tax. That property, the open space, certainly has become a treasure for the town. People walking there, it's a pretty amazing spot. The idea of a community center, historical society, somehow keeping the property, and perhaps actually building some of the affordable housing we're talking about. I think that, instead of just looking at hotels as funding sources for the town, that it's important to look at other things, like a tax, a tax like that, or, you know, these other things of a bond or a business tax, but something other than just building hotels, because we have these other hotels that are in the pipeline, and we don't know what the impacts are yet. Certainly, Los Alcoas, we found out that people are going to be losing their parking, and I actually believe it's going to affect the flow of traffic north of town, because the people who live there are going to have to back directly now into oncoming traffic. But that's an impact nobody thought about, and we haven't even seen what it's going to do. So I think before we start looking at hotels as the source of getting out, you know, building our way out of a problem, because hotels bring more workers who can't live here, it's going to create more traffic. If you haven't seen the traffic, we have a problem. It's going to create more water use. So I think we need to see where we are with things that are already approved before we consider more hotels, more building to build our way out. So I like this idea of another solution that Greg brought up, that somehow might help solve that problem without trying to build our way out of it. And so that's kind of where I'm at on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellsworth. Mr. Thomas?
Obviously, I've been up here before, right? Same circumstances. My name is Mike Thomas, 2170 Palmer Drive, St. Helena. The Committee for Rebuild St. Helena, of which I am a member, has advised the city council previously that the RFP process is not the right approach to maximizing financial benefit from the city's most valuable asset. The appraisal that the city contracted for states that the highest and best use of Adams Street parcel is a hotel. However, the appraisal was conducted on the basis that it would be developed for mixed-use commercial residential. Yet, the RFP makes reference to the diversity provided by retail and housing options, but makes no specific reference to financial benefits of hotel development anywhere in the presentation. A much more effective approach, possibly less time-consuming for the city staff, is to concentrate efforts on maximizing financial benefit to the city by focusing on selling to a resort developer. This can be best accomplished by retaining a commercial real estate advisor that has significant experience marketing resort hotels, is highly respected in the field both nationally and internationally, knows prospective buyers who would have specific interest in a resort development in Napa Valley, and would put together a marketing package much more detailed than the RFP presentation, and is directed at the local hotel market and the economics such as room rates, occupancy rates, sales of hotel land sites, or fully improved properties. This is information that a prospective buyer would need to make a preliminary determination of their interest. Additionally, this real estate firm would be better able to determine the value of the Adams Street property for a resort development than an appraiser who does not specialize in hotel valuation. Furthermore, the inclusion in the RFP presentation of the Adams Street Property Visioning Design Portfolio drafted in 2008 and 2009 as an informational framework for crafting development proposals seems confusing in its intent, and could have an adverse effect if you wish to maximize financial benefit. If you want to incorporate some of the elements envisioned in that report into the overall development, then you are only reducing the parcel's value by reducing the portion of the site which would be generating future revenues to the city through transient occupancy tax, property taxes, and sales taxes. The city council shouldn't be confusing wants with needs. It's time to stress the needs for the city that are possible from the sale of the site, which is financial stability now and in the future. Almost finished. Also, a land lease proposed as an option to sale, which would likely be for a term of up to 50 years, including renewable options, is not going to produce the money we need now. The city ill-afford to wait 50 years to get what it wanted as originally envisioned in the Adams Street site. There are other options for this vision, as outlined in our website, rebuildstelena.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Hasslepp. I live in Sylvaner Avenue. I actually wanted to speak to both of the issues, so I might need two, three-minute segments, because they really are, they really need to be shaped differently. One has to do with the question of, what are your needs? It's been pretty clear from the things that are coming back to us through the paper, that the existing facilities that you have are unacceptable, insufficient. It's not clear to me just how bad. Are they about to be condemned and need to be torn down, whether we like it or not? Or can they be remodeled? Regardless, the question that I have, what are your needs, and what will it cost? So the first question is, isn't so much the Adams Street property is, where are you going to get the money to do that project? Now, either you're going to sell the Adams Street project for the purpose of getting money to meet your other needs, or you're going to pass a bond measure in order to get the revenue to do that. You're not going to get it through sales taxes and other ongoing revenue sources. You're not going to get that. That's for ongoing costs, not for building some facility, although you could do something small. So what's it going to be? Are you going to pass a bond measure to take care of that? Or are you going to sell off an asset? And to me, I prefer that you sell off the asset. And how you sell it, as one citizen, I don't care. What I'm concerned about is that the city facilities are unacceptable, and I would like to see you solve that problem. I'd like to see you solve that problem soon. So please choose one way or the other in order to get the revenue to fix that problem. So that's my first, that's the first issue. So I'd be inclined to sell your asset, so you can meet your needs, because your needs are not being addressed, just in terms of facilities. Okay. So I'm finished with the first one. So I need additional time for the second one. The second question really is related, the two things are related, but the question is, what are your needs? And if you look at your current situation, obviously, what you're not doing, as you know, not you, but historically, is we have not put aside ongoing maintenance costs and needs for things like roads and all your other costs, the facilities and everything. And it's, I'm on the Budget Committee for the school district, so we've just gone through the process of correcting this over a period of about five or six years with a Budget Committee, and the school board paying attention to this. But what you have to have is identifying all your maintenance costs over a 20- to 30-year period, from roofs to windows to doors to carpets to everything, and cost it all out. So you've got a large number. So over 30, you're going to spend this over the next 30 years. So therefore, on our yearly budget, you're going to put aside 1/20th or 1/30th every single year, and you don't neglect that. Because what's been happening is, it's inconvenient to put the money aside to fix the roads because you don't have it. And you don't have it because councils, for dozens of years ahead of you, have neglected it. So you inherit a situation which is completely unacceptable to me as a citizen, because the maintenance, the management has been unacceptable. So the question is, given what your needs are for long-term maintenance, annual running of the place, put the two together, and what do you need in terms of additional revenues already above what you already have? All right? So does that mean a half a cent sales tax increase? Or does that mean a 1 percent sales tax increase? That's the question. So then we know. Then the second part of that is, you need to sell it to us. So you decide what you need, and then when you decide it, ask us to come together to help sell it to the community, just like we did with the bond measure for the schools. We passed two bond measures for the schools, and it requires an enormous amount of effort so that people can understand where the money's going. This is going to go for general purposes, but what are those general purposes? It's been shared to us in letters to the editor and so on, but not everybody gets those, gets those newspapers. There needs to be some kind of a door-to-door campaign, as well as an ongoing visit community, and it has to be 100 percent endorsement by all five community, five council members. If the five of you are not behind it, then there's no sense going ahead with it, because the committee will doubt that it's a good idea. So that's one of the things you have to put your heads together. Do you really endorse fixing this problem? Or are you okay with continuing the culture of drift and disintegrate? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think it's that complicated. It's been interesting, but I will only make one brief point. TOT is played exclusively by tourists. 12 percent is by far the biggest revenue producer that is available to us. Listen to Pam Simpson's presentation earlier. Look at the numbers. TOT is a very simple thing. More importantly, it doesn't cost us a dime, because the developer pays for the hotel. The tourists pay for the rates, the tourists pay the TOT. The tourists are the ones that are impacting us. But our resolution of that is, we don't want them. I moved here in 1993. The mantra was, no more hotel rooms, no more restaurant seats, we don't want them. Get them out of here. What's the solution? Maybe that center lane that is to be built, you could turn either direction. When you get to St. Helena, maybe you should double-strip it on both sides and dedicate it exclusively to tourists, so they can just drive straight through this town. We don't want them to eat here. We don't want them to sleep here. Go away. That, to me, is, just doesn't make any sense. It's not that complicated. Sell Adams Street and build the Adams dream at the Lyman Park area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Well, let me close public comment. There's a...
Have you absorbed all that, Mr. Mayor?
A lot to think about, a lot to think about. Mr. Doring, do you have any initial thoughts?
Well, I had a question. Expect to, can you, manager, refresh my recollection as to what our polling pollster person did, or the Lou Edwards group did? Did they have some comments in terms of the various sales tax percentage rate rates? And did they make recommendations in terms of whether it would be a five, a half percent or 1 percent? Or should we identify projects or not? I don't recall what exactly they said, because I'd like to have data on that, rather than sort of guessing.
Sadly, the polling was originally done because the council gave direction to pursue a real property transfer tax. So that was the total intent, and 80 percent of the polling was based on the real property transfer tax and the charter city. It was actually at the recommendation of the ad hoc revenue source task force, that when I talked about that revenue source, the real property transfer tax, they said, well, if you're going to do that poll, could you throw in a question or two on a sales tax initiative? So just as the survey questions were being finalized, I pushed in a couple of sales tax questions, because you have a very specific period of time, and that the survey can only be statistically 13 minutes or whatever, and so you have to squeeze all that information into this period of time for the questioning. So it was not about, the polling was not about a sales tax initiative. So there was a half percent, and I believe it was 52 or 54 percent was in favor. The real property transfer tax and the charter city came in below the 50 percent point, and the sales tax just above. So there was still information about, do you think these things are important? Do you think these things should be fixed? Where do you consider priority in funding? That could be related to either, a real property transfer tax or a sales tax. But I have no statistical data, and there's no time to do a poll prior to you making the decision in August. We can't repoll and have that data for you.
With respect to the couple of questions there were on the sales tax, I know it's obviously limited, would you consider that positive news, when you say 52 to 54 percent? Or is that kind of distressing news in the pollster business?
It was close. They didn't really make a recommendation, because that's not what they were focused on, so they made the recommendation about the real property transfer tax. I think we've seen nationally that the polling techniques are starting to come under question. I'm not questioning our polling company. I'm saying that the voter has changed, and so they're really finding that we're communicating differently, that different types of individuals are answering polls, are responding. A lot of people don't answer their cell phone, and so, you know, that's, with a 3% or 4% margin of error, you potentially are under the 50 percent. So again, it was, I believe it was one or two questions, and it was literally about the half-cent sales tax. So I don't think we have really anything meaty to go off of.
I just have a general concern about one, half percent to 1 percent. I think your idea is intriguing. I'm fearful that, you know, once the, we'll know more after the June election, but the 1 percent is a big hit, if you compare it to a quarter cent, that's going to go, maybe go on to the ballot and get passed. So 1 percent seems like not a lot, but I like your idea, and I do like the notion of getting it while you can. I just, it's just a gut reaction, that I don't think the community would support a 1 percent. And I don't know, do you have memories about the prior sales tax and what the community was thinking back then in terms of half cent, 1 percent, and what the data showed?
Well, one thing that I do know is that the council was split. We were not 100 percent united behind the sales tax, so it did not sell well.
It was below a soft sell.
It did not sell well.
Part of the nuance here, because I'm concerned about even a half cent passing at 50 percent for the same reasons. People don't want additional taxes. But if you bring in something that is, look, here's something that's going to happen that's good out of it, right? Our streets are going to get fixed, our sidewalks are going to get fixed. Not right away, but over time. We can actually potentially hold on to Adams Street and do something with the community envisions. That might get it over the hump. It might not, right? But here's the thing, all of these options are great options. We're all thinking creatively, which I appreciate, and I appreciate all the efforts of all the community that's coming together. And we need to look at all these options, right? We've got to do it quickly. All of them take time. You know, if we went out and did the RFP and then the selection process, that might take, you know, a year from end to end to get to where we actually choose someone, right? The other thing is to go out and market this site and get it entitled, so we could actually see the cash, and then get something built and developed where TOT can come in. That's a long time. If this worked, if this worked, and people said, we really want this, it'll take us six months to get to an answer on that, and we'll know. And we should PR it and make sure that people really understand the implications of the decision, one way or the other. If they say no, then the path is clear. Either we do the RFP, or we don't do the RFP, and we go out and market it and sell it. But we've eliminated one of the decisions, and we've really gotten the people to weigh in. That, to me, is the, and I don't have a dog in this fight, but that's the beauty to me. I do like the park, I do like the idea of preservation, but there's a cost to that. If we're not, if we're going to do that, we've got to find some other way to generate the revenue that a hotel otherwise would. But I'm also really struggling for, what do the people really want here? And that, this is one sure way to at least get a better handle on it, versus the good people that do come to our meetings consistently, which is a very small percentage of our population. And the few people that I've floated this idea to, they really like it.
Wouldn't we test that idea by receiving various proposals back during the option, during the...
The RFP.
In the RFP... In the RFP process? Sounds like we're, you know, there's a lot of interest there. And then it would be up to the city to engage with the public and say, well, which one of these proposals would be the best case scenario for our current needs and our core values and what we want on that property and what we need the money for? Wouldn't we have at least something? I mean, we don't have to necessarily go ahead and accept the proposals, right? We can just look at them and go, okay, this is, we've tested it, it turned out to either be good or a flop.
I don't think any of the people that respond to the RFP will say, we, here's a, here's a plan where we can build civic, community center, whatever that is. It could be very little, it could be something that's bigger, plus open space and parkland. We're not going to get that as a response. I mean, maybe, 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 you know, the Bill Gates, Melinda Gates Foundation would respond with that RFP, and it'd be a donation, but I doubt we're going to get that out of the RFP.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, so this is where I am on this. We are in a serious fiscal crisis. So I think that Greg's idea is a great one, because the reality is, we are never going to be able to afford to do anything with the Adams Street property unless, absent something like a sales tax to fund it, or an RFP, or a sale. We're just not going to be able to implement the visioning of the people without that. However, aside from that, we have been dealing with this prop, we have been, we have owned this property for 16 years. Right now, I am very con, so I think it's a great idea for funding it. I am very concerned that a one percent sales tax will fail, and frankly, we cannot afford to not, I am, I'm, believe me, I've been against the sales tax. I was against it last time. I was one of the council members that was not in favor of it. I do not like the idea of being the highest sales tax town in Napa County. However, we are in, at, at a severe emergency. I do not think we can take the risk of not getting any sales tax passed in this election. And so I, I am af, so I believe we should put a half cent sales tax on the ballot. And we will defer this idea to perhaps the net, we've already owned this property for 16 years and nothing has happened. I think it's a great idea to let the people decide. If they want to fund it with another half cent, great. And that, and they want to keep it open space, heritage vineyard, whatever. If not, then they're really, the writing is on the wall, and we need to move forward with selling it or an RFP. Now, I, as far as, as far as the sale goes, with all due respect to Mr. Levy, the appraiser, you know, he lists 17 things he's appraised, he lists multiple things he's appraised, the 17th one was lodging. I am not a real estate expert, but I don't think at this point, we can afford, afford to potentially leave $10 million on the table. So I think if we are going to go ahead with a sale, we need to figure out whether in fact, we would be leaving significant amount of money, even $1 million on the table is frankly a lot. So I don't know if it's possible to, to do what Mr. Thomas suggests, which is market the property with a luxury high-end hotel person. If you can do that simultaneously with an RFP, maybe the two things are mutually exclusive, and they just, one person's not going to deal if the other RFP is out there.
That's the problem.
So I think what we should do right now is, is put the one, put the half cent sales tax on the ballot. Defer this. We will know in June whether the county has passed the 0.25%. And then, after the election in November, which as Greg said, it's, all of this is going to, this RFP, all of this is going to take a long time anyways. We've been doing this for 16 years. We can then revisit, we will then have a better idea of the projects that are in the pipeline. For example, I don't know what the current status is of the Farmstead Hotel or the Vineland Station. I don't know if it's appropriate for you to tell me, because it's not on the agenda, although I would be interested in knowing, because if we had a better idea of what the status of those two projects were in terms of a timeline, maybe we would have a better idea of how to evaluate the, the urgent need to sell the property. The urgent need is that the City Hall property is, who knows when it's going to be condemned? It could be next week. But I, I, I do think that we, we cannot take the risk-
Should have been last week.
We cannot take the risk of not passing the sales tax, and I believe strongly that all five of us need to back it, and we need to convince the community that we need to come together and pass that sales tax. After that, I think we need to revisit, I think Greg's idea is a good one, that let the people decide whether they want to fund the Adams Street parcel in a, in a more natural state, or whether we should go ahead and sell it, and so that we can fund everything else. That, that's just where I, I, I see it. I, I am not a fan of kicking the can down the road at all, and that's not what I'm proposing here. I just feel like we need to be fiscally responsible and respectful of, of the community's wishes, and I feel like this is the only way to solve all those problems.
I'm generally in favor of what you're saying, except I would, I would go back to the original process that we started with the RFP, with respect to the both RFPs for City Hall and for Adams Street. Go forward with that process and see what that delivers us, but also put the half cent sales tax on the ballot. So I, I think they can go simultaneously. If, if we don't, if, if it comes back where, as there's a fear out there that we're just not going to generate anything that comes close to getting the money that we, we, that is justified, then we'll be in a position to say, no, thank you, that's not going to work for us. But I don't, and my other concern is, you know, the, the notion of putting aside part of that money from the sales tax on the one percent or whatever we decide, and then using that money to be the revenue source, source for a bond. I, I think that is an extremely expensive way of, of getting some buildings built. I, I think the, the less expensive way is having developer build the buildings rather than giving us money or having a, an income stream. I trust, I, I just have a fundamental trust that I'd rather have a developer who's a builder build the buildings rather than putting money into a savings account for us and letting us decide to build the buildings. I think frankly, that would be a, not the best outcome for the city, knowing what I know about city government.
But if you did the, if you did the half percent, and I like this idea of like, sort of doing that later, if you did that down the road and that, and people said, look, we want to keep this, we want to add this extra tax, and this is where we will put City Hall eventually, you could then sell the City Hall site and have a deal where you generate cash from that, in addition to some type of financing that can be refi'd, you know, or repaid faster.
I guess-
Couldn't those ideas, couldn't those ideas come out of the RFP process?
Maybe.
The reason that I don't agree, Paul, with you is because I think that the RFP process is, well, first of all, if we're going to sell that parcel, I think we need to get the most money we can for it. So I, I don't necessarily, I don't want to leave many money on the table. But if we aren't going to sell it, then that's fine. So that's why I sort of feel like, I don't want, I don't want all these developers investing all of their time and energy in the RFP process if we're actually then going to put a measure on the ballot, which says, do we want to keep it in its natural state? And not, see what I'm saying? So if we waited a year to then, to then issue the RFPs, we would have a better sense of what the-
My only, my only concern is that, when you all mentioned, well, we want to get the best price for, for Adams Street, to me, that's inconsistent with trying to align our decision-making with what the city wants. So the city, the citizens may not want the best price. They may want something that's a compromise with some buildings, and maybe something less than the best price. That's my concern. It's not just a matter of getting the most money, and then not being able to satisfy all of the other needs that the citizens have really already spoken about in the visioning process. So that is my concern.
Well, is it possible, I, I don't know if this is possible, is it possible to issue an RFP and simultaneously talk to luxury, real estate professionals that market luxury properties, and to, so that, so that we would actually have every option on the table when we were making a decision?
Can I, go ahead.
Heard from Peter yet.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I don't think we can do any of that simultaneously, because I think you're sending a message to the developers that are going to be responding to an RFP, that, well, we haven't really made up our minds, we really don't know what we're going to do, but we think we may do this or that, you know? So I guess I want to go back to Greg's idea. I mean, it's really intriguing, and, and I'd love to have at least a discussion about it, if we could get it on the, you know, the June first, I mean, our first meeting in June, to at least have a meaningful discussion with, you know, here. And, and then at that point, decide whether we, you know, we've, he's got enough support, or we've got enough support to go down that road, and, and possibly do a one cent sales tax. And, and I still think, I mean, no matter what, we have to at least go for the half cent. That's my opinion. And, and we need to start that process tonight. But if there's a possibility of, of tagging this along at a one percent sales tax, that it makes sense to the citizens, I think, you know, it, it's a, it could be a great idea, and I'd love to at least have that discussion. And, and, and after we have that discussion, then we, I mean, I'm still a proponent of putting the RFP out, so we have a discussion rather than just picking one, one proposal and not having heard any of the other proposals. So it's either, it's either we do the one cent sales tax, or we do the RFP, and, and I think at the next meeting, if we can get it on the agenda, then we have that discussion and, and come to a conclusion then. But no matter what, we're going to do at least, I mean, in my opinion, I think, I think we all realize that we have to do the minimum of a half cent sales tax, and, and go forward with that.
Okay, well, basically, the vice mayor took the words out of my mouth. I don't see how, I think what you proposed is intriguing, and it's worth further discussion, but I don't see how we can go down the road of what you're proposing and go down the RFP road at the same time, for precisely the reasons that the vice mayor says. It, it shows that it would get, the word would be out that we weren't serious about fairly evaluating responses to the RFP. With respect to the RFP process itself, it seems to me that a hotel developer would understand that, just what Mr. Bartlett said in terms of its benefit to the city. And I would hope that there would be some proposers that would come back with full-scale hotel proposals. I hope there would be some others. And at that point, we're going to be put in the position of evaluating them, picking and choosing, and also in the context of, of perhaps one more hotel proposal apart from Mr. Hall's project that might, might come along. So my thought would be pretty much along with what the vice mayor suggests, which is that at the first June meeting, we have a fuller discussion gives, of, of Mr. Pitts's proposal, gives the community some time to weigh in. Certainly, I'm fully supportive of the half cent sales tax. I'm skeptical about the penny, and I don't see how you could have two separate ballot measures. It's going to have to be one, and it's going to need to be a general measure, and we have to evaluate whether, if we say we're going to devote a quarter cent out of one cent to, one quarter cent or one half cent out of one cent to what Mr. Pitts is proposing, as a, I say as a political commitment, but that's probably not quite the crazyology, whether we think the electorate will trust us enough to, to, to do that. But it seems to me it's worth, what you propose is worth some further discussion. This is all new news to the community. And so I would suggest that you have direction, in the sense that we're definitely going for a minimum of half a cent sales tax. We've all said that on the November ballot. And whether we tweak it, and it goes up to a penny, with some portion of it being devoted to what happens with respect to Adams Street, we'll have to decide. But I think, hopefully, we're all in agreement that we can't go down the road of Mr. Pitts and the road of the RFPs at the same time. If we're going to go down the RFP road, then Mr. Pitts's proposal would, would need to be rejected. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, no, I think, I think you've summed up the optionality and what is feasible versus not feasible well.
Okay.
I'll add one other comment, you know, if, and this is more about RFP versus, you know, figuring out the highest and best use and just selling it. And Paul, you raise a really good point, which is, is there something in between that the people want? Maybe it's, you know, instead of doing 100-key luxury hotel that takes up all five and a half, 5.6, whatever the acreage is, it's a 50-key hotel, which is tougher to operate, tougher to get people to pay top dollar for, plus some civic, you know, uses. And, you know, I, I hadn't, you know, thought about it that way previously, sort of mixing the two together. It was sort of either all in or not. And if you're going to go all in, you really have to go all in, in, in my opinion. If we could, if we all decided, if the people said, we want to sell this thing, right, and that's the best thing, I'd love to figure out how to actually entitle it, right, as the city, and then go out and sell it. Problem is, I understand legally, we can't do that. We can't entitle it as a hotel with a loose set of parameters around exactly what it'll look like and how it'll fit on there, but some number of defined keys and go out and sell it, because that's how you would maximize the value at the end of the day. And as long as there's uncertainty in terms of the process, is it going to take two years to entitle, four years, seven years? Who knows? People are probably going to lowball, because they might spend $7 million, $10 million on entitlements, they might spend two, unlikely. And so they don't know what they can really afford to pay until they've figured. So you have to have this really creative structure in terms of what the ultimate cash, you know, for the property is going to be, that's based on how long does it take, and what do you, what do you spend on the entitlements? And generally, it's legal costs that'll run it up and opposition. So it's a tough, it's a tough thing to, and I'm just bringing this up because it's tough to solve for what are you really going to get? And I just come back to, what do the people want? And is this some, I think this is something we should explore. I wish I had thought of it earlier, but I didn't, but here it is. And is there, is, and I think we, I think we have an obligation to look at it, talk a little bit more about it. And in the big, the crux is, can you get, well, if you could do the rider, where it's, it's a, you know, 50% plus one, then it's really the half cent versus 1%. That's the, the crux of the decision. If you can't do the rider, and you have to phys, you really have to commit and go for that two-thirds, then it's a higher hurdle. And I really don't know, you know, where are the thresholds? Where are the breakpoints? And where do people say, no? Do they get really excited about saying, hey, I'm going to go for this, even though it's 1% because it's going to preserve this thing that is really near and dear to my heart? Or in, versus, oh, it's a half percent, and what's this going to go to? It's not really defined, it's just fat on the hog, and I have no idea where it'll be spent. So I don't know the psychology behind that, but I think it's really important to our decision, thinking about that, that psychology.
Okay, well, as far as I could see, we all have a lot more thought to put into this, given what's happened.
Do you have any expiration date on the, or anything else about the sales tax?
Oh, in terms of, in terms of the half cent, or even, or even the penny, it seems to me that-
Do we need to have a more discussion around the sales tax as to what other things we'd like to include in terms of expiration date?
Yeah, good, good point.
Or potentially list, I'm not sure, but Ray, I, I feel more comfortable at least making a political commitment about some of the things we would do with the half cent, but I'm not sure if the council's ready to do the list now, but maybe-
I'm quite happy to come in with a list at the June meeting.
Well, that's fine. I mean, that's discussion at that point, as long as we have enough time.
And if someone can give me a word count as to how many words I'm allowed to use. I'm very good at word count.
So the, the election in June is-
Forty.
Seventh.
And so our meeting is after that. So maybe we should have that discussion.
But, yeah, and I, there's some models out there that can be used that the Ad Hoc Revenue Task Force had. So I'm perfectly, perfectly happy to do the wordsmithing with respect to that, subject to council approval. With respect to a sunset provision, it seems to me very clearly, if you went down the road of Mr. Pitts, that you would not consider a sunset provision.
Right.
That would be counterproductive completely. And I, given our needs, I must say, I, I'm personally opposed to a sunset provision.
Especially considering the need for sinking funds and things like that.
Exactly right, yeah.
The reality is, even the, the half percent just, you know, basically covers our ongoing operations at a level that maybe we just barely expect, right?
Yeah, it's keeping our level of service barely at, at what we've got right now.
Yeah.
And if we want to increase that, then we got to think about a higher-
And if we wanted to do-
Higher revenue sources.
And maybe, you know, maybe it's three quarters, it's in the middle and not the full one, I don't know. Again, stuff to think about. But anything above that, it's going to, it's going to start to chip away at our deferred maintenance and our, our- to, it's going to start to chip away at our deferred maintenance and our, our failing streets and infrastructure, but it's not going to solve the problem, so I think a sunset, to me, is just out of the question, I think it needs to be in perpetuity.
Well, I think if the county passes the .25, we should consider the .75 because a whole nother percentage of point over that will, will take us into a different realm in people's minds, I think.
Flexibility in terms of, we can go by the .125 increments in terms of where do we, how do we price this thing if we went above that half, right?
I just want to state for the record that I'm not necessarily, I'm not, actually not even necessarily, I'm not in favor of a sunset clause, so just.
Not in favor.
Not in favor, yeah.
Either mine.
I, I was, when we had that discussion the last time we were talking about it, but, I mean, on further thought, I wouldn't vote for a sunset clause on the half cent.
There's a very, very well-known saying, I think it was of Justice Jackson, "It does not appear to be now as it appears to have appeared to be then."
So true.
One of the additional things too, that I thought one of our, our speakers tonight so eloquently stated was, let's, let's, I mean, we know what our needs are because we've done this long-term financial forecast, but trying to say, instead of .125 or .5 or .25, how much money is it and what could we get done with it and how much is still left to be done? That, I know it's more work, but it'd be, even if it's at a high level, it'd be nice to get a sense so that not only we can get a good, we'll get a good sense either way, but then the public can have a, a sense of how much of our problem are we tackling? How much of our long-term deferred maintenance are we tackling?
I think you've done that spreadsheet so many times that.
I think it's more than 1.4 million a year. I guarantee that.
We, we tried to give you a fairly, still high level, but a good estimate for the infrastructure, the buildings are, I mean, that, that, we talked about that during the budget process, we had monies in for a consultant to do a facility study, and we took it out because we couldn't balance the budget. That, that, we do not have the staff resources or expertise to do, and, and the gentleman's absolutely correct, you, we, we should have that planned out for twenty or thirty years, we should know exactly what we need to spend, and we know nothing, we, we have none of that, that's an asset management plan, we, we just don't.
We need the half percent just to get to the point where we can afford to do that work.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
It's the reality.
That's the reality. There's nothing that we could produce for you, I mean, there, there's, there's, you could use industry standards and best practices, you could do percentages, I think that's how I, I don't even remember how I, I think I just came up with a number that wasn't shocking for, for the buildings. You could do 2%, you could do, I mean, there's things we could noodle a number for you, but we could, we couldn't, we could not provide you with detailed information.
Right. Well, have we given you enough direction on the sales tax at least for the moment?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So one other thing that we didn't discuss when we were talking about Adam Street is the other two parcels that we have, the, are we going to put out RFPs for City Hall and, and the Railroad Avenue, or do we want to do some kind of architectural, so we have an idea of what the cost of a new City Hall, or, I know, that is not a building that can be remodeled.
No.
Beyond remodeling. My understanding, Mr. House, was that you're far along in terms of an RFP with respect to the City Hall property.
City Hall RFP could be issued fairly quickly, if, if direction's given to do it, we can get it done in a very.
But it's not for a City Hall.
No, I understand.
Okay, because that, it, it doesn't, there's no design, there's no nothing for City Hall.
Right.
So if you were interested in.
But that's what, that's one of the options that you gave us in this was to come up with some kind of design and, and cost estimates for a City Hall and a police department, so we have an idea.
Well, if we were, would this, would this sort of RFP contemplate some of the elements that Rebuild St. Helena has proposed?
The, the RFP, yes, Rebuild St. Helena essentially took the visioning process or a good percentage of it and, and identified those elements being built adjacent to City Hall or on the City Hall property. The goal of the RFP, the way it was written, which intentionally, as Mr. Thomas pointed out, does not ever mention a hotel, is because staff, being relatively new, looked at the information that was available to me, and it was the visioning process, and, and the idea was, how could a potential request or proposals that address the city's financial circumstances by increasing revenue, so elements of the development would have to increase revenue, while also meeting some of the visioning process that was done that the citizens have stated that they wanted? And, and that was the intent of how this E RFP was crafted, and, and is why it, it intentionally does not mention hotel, also because some of the previous discussions about hotel and do we want to specifically say that? However, the RFP specifically says that every response needs to identify how it will benefit the city's financial situation currently, while also how it also took into consideration the information that was in the visioning process. So that, that was the goal of it, it was, it was exactly like Commissioner Doring and, and Pitt started talking about it, is it was a, a middle ground between highest and best value and a civic center, a recreational center that drives no revenue to the city. So it was staff trying to kind of split the middle and come up with a compromise that may not make everyone happy but addresses everyone's concerns and needs.
Right, so, so a couple of things, one, I think Peter's referring to the other RFP process.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So keep in mind that, that as we develop the RFP process, that the original one, there is no direction from council to build a hotel on Adam Street, and so Councilmember Croll asked the question, can the city hire a broker as suggested by Rebuild St. Helena? Rebuild St. Helena, absolutely, if that's, if the council wants to make the decision that a hotel's going to be built on Adam Street, and, and you can direct us to do an RFP, and we hire a broker and we sell the property. The, the issue for us from, from a staff perspective is, there is no decision or directive from council to sell that property and have it be a hotel, and so, being respectful to public process, we wanted the opportunity for the council and the community to be part of that discussion, so that's why the RFP's crafted in the way that it is. The second RFP that we're talking about is, yes, to take those three properties, and so if you wanted to exclude Adams and, and just have an architecture firm look at the railroad properties and City Hall and see what could be done there from, from a civic perspective, including construction costs, operating costs, and maintenance costs, you could still issue that RFP. It costs money, so we would have to dip into reserves to be able to fund that, but that could, that could happen separate from the discussion on Adam Street and, and, and the sales tax initiative, if you're interested in doing that, because that's the government buildings, but then it becomes the obligation and responsibility of the city, we would basically be looking for designs for those two, and no developer, no, no one's going to come in and build those for us, it's basically what does it cost us to, to, what would it cost the city to do those things?
And just as a staff member, getting back to the point of, of the issuing both an RFP for Adam Street and City Hall with potential mix would, in theory, drive revenue to then construct a new City Hall, so.
Right.
What's, I mean, not to point out the, the, a concern, but does it matter, do we need to create a City Hall designer, understand how much it's going to cost if we're not making decisions that generate the revenue to do it?
Yeah, I was going to make that same point, I don't think we are in a, in a position where we can start doing a design charrette with a hundred different permutations with respect to what's going to go where, we can't even hire someone to figure out where our deferred maintenance is.
Well, I just brought this up because it was there and we didn't discuss it, so.
Yeah, no, you're right, but I think we almost have to like scrap that for now, and, and really what's going to happen is with the discussion of the, of the tax measure, we're going to decide, you know, whether or not Adam Street is included.
We go down that road.
If it is, then it's going to have certain implications potentially on what will happen on Main Street ultimately, because if the voters said, hey, let's keep it, and you put a City, City Hall there, then you can start looking at, at either a straight sale of a hotel site on Main Street or some other mixed use. If, if not, and we end up selling or RFP-ing out Adam Street, then we got to figure out how to, how to rebuild Main Street in all likelihood, and maybe with some combination. And two things I want to add there, one interesting concept, and I sort of, I'm going to call it the Oddfellows model, because the Oddfellows have this building where the bottom stories and an office in the front and the second story are leased at really high prices, and so it's sort of like a private-public deal where this money comes into the Oddfellows and it allows them to maintain and keep that building. There might be a way, and this, this actually goes back to Rebuild St. Helena's good ideas of having spaces that are on the ground floor and even a rooftop deck that could be rentable that generates additional, you know, lease revenue that can be used in the financing efforts of creating that, or rebuilding that site if we go there, and I think it's something we should be looking at. I love the idea of the Historical Society as the four-year entry, second story is City Hall offices, cafe on the park to energize that park and create something that's more special and utilized, and then the other side, that it's like nine thousand square feet in total, so maybe three thousand square feet that's rented out to the highest payer, then a rooftop that can be rented, but then, that's, I think there's a model there that's really interesting. The other thing I wanted to add that's escaped me right now, so I might not be able to add it.
So while you're thinking about that.
That's what I was talking about, about the, the, the second RFP.
Yeah, and.
Some of us are getting older, Greg, don't give us too much.
Yeah, that's right. It's a good thing that you had a lapse of, of thought right there.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, that's, that's why I think if we don't go down, you know, after we have a discussion about, about Adam Street and your plan and, and all of that, I, I really think that we need to throw both of those RFPs out there, so, so we have the development community looking at both, just like what, you know, all of these guys did, and, and put that in the mix, so.
Oh, I know the other thing I wanted to add, I've been looking at small towns in New England, and I'm not saying that this would work or not, but it's something we need to look at when we talk about our police station, in my humble opinion. A lot of the smaller towns in New England have found that their fire stations and their police stations, which have historically been two separate infrastructure units and buildings, both are failing and need to be rebuilt, and so, at, at first people said, let's fill up bonds to build them both, and a lot of communities have said, you know what, let's build them together in one space, and I don't know if it's feasible or possible from a political perspective, from a physical perspective, from a, a sharing perspective at all, but if we're going to talk about where the police station goes, is there a way to integrate it into the fire station, which is a pretty sizable building, could you add to that? And, and as we think through all these permutations and options, does that mean shared dispatch and lowering costs? Just, again, something to throw out there as we, as we, you know, work through this, this challenging process.
I like it.
Let me, let me, there, let me just see where we are in terms of what we're expecting of staff at this point, and that is.
Stop throwing ideas out.
Right. So I think we've, we're all clear that we don't want to dip into reserves at this point for further studies, we just cannot risk dipping into reserves further. I think we're, we're generally in agreement that we should be putting an RFP out with respect to the City Hall property, meaning the City Hall property, not Lyman Park, in conjunction with the RFP with respect to the Adam Street property if we go down that road, and I think we're, we remain in agreement that we can't go down that road unless we decide that we can't go down the road that Mr. Pitt's has proposed tonight. So I think that's sort of the, oh, that's the, that's the, that's the 5,000-foot view, I don't want to say 40,000-foot view because that's too high, but.
The only thing I would add is, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that the RFP is the best path if we don't go for the 1% piece, but I think I'm going to be overruled anyway, and we're not making that decision right now, but that's.
Good try.
All right.
So we're going to hold off on the whole RFP process.
Correct.
Do nothing at this time. At the first meeting in June, we will bring back additional information about a sales tax initiative for the November 2016 ballot that includes flushing out Councilmember Pitt's ideas.
That's right.
Okay. Great, thank you for the great discussion.
Okay. Adrian, thank you very much, everybody.